You. You.
Call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Get in for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is safe, one nation, under heaven, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. At this time, we're going to open the public hearing. I'd like to introduce Jason Femright from Bolton &amp; Mink. He's got a presentation for you, and then I'm sure he'll answer some questions after that.
That's yours.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Again, my name is Jason Femright. I'm with Bolton &amp; Mink. I am the city engineer for the great city of Janesville, and we are here today for what's called the improvement hearing. We're going to have a number of meetings on this for the 2022 street utility improvements. These improvements have been on the capital improvement plan here within the city of Janesville for a number of years, and we've been knocking off projects about every other year in accordance to what the city's financial situation is, and now we are in the position to moving on to your guys' project. So I'm going to go through a presentation here tonight that's going to kind of overview the project. I do want to stress tonight that we are going to have more meetings. Right now, we're just in preliminary design. There hasn't been any final design. We don't know exactly where sidewalks are going. The street networks are fairly set, but what we need to do is collect some survey information and actually start the design. And within that, we will be inviting you in for an open house meetings to talk about some of those more of the details. So tonight's give you a flavor of what the project is, some preliminary assessments that have been calculated for this and to kind of what are some of the next steps. So with that, we'll get going here. Like I mentioned, the city does have an extensive capital improvement plan that they've outlined, and we've done some street inventory, sanitary sewer, water main systems for the entire city and looked at what are our biggest needs, and those largest needs get to the top of the list. So this project is essentially West Allen Street from Cassau 18 to Main Street. That Main Street to Teal Street was completed in 2018. That was a project that got lumped into the Grove Street project. That's really not a ton of information needed for you guys, but essentially that west side of Allen Street is a majority of this project. And then also working with city staff, that East Grove and Northeast Street are also included in this project. Those have been some of the worst utilities within the city, both sanitary sewer and water main. There's been a number of water main breaks within that area. Nate's been tended to that for a number of years. So we've kind of combined those two together. They're a little bit separate in location, but we are going to include that in one bid package. Potentially, the East Grove and that Northeast Street may be an alternate. We may bid that as an alternate, bring that back to the council, and make sure that we have enough funds to be able to do that project. So the base part of the project is going to be the Allen Street, and then the alternate is that Grove and East Street. Essentially, we know that has to get done, and we know it's top on our list. Can we afford to do that all at this time? That's what we still need to design the project, bid the project, make sure those numbers come in, because what we are in is in a great bidding environment. Interest rates are very low in construction. Prices aren't going to get any cheaper in the future. So that's really necessitated the need to add this to this project, but again, going to be bidding that as an alternate. So here are the two locations. It may be a little bit of a challenge to see. So that Allen Street there is on the bottom left, and then Grove and East Street are there on the right side. There you go. Perfect. Yeah, look at that. Nice. So those are our locations, again, west of Main Street and then those other portions as illustrated there. So this next slide, we're going to kind of go through. Do you want to jump to that? There we go. So this is an illustration that we've put together that kind of explains what this project is. There's a lot of things that happened underneath the street. When a contractor comes in, I'll get the same questions like, "They just dug up our street. Now they're coming back and they're digging it up again." And then they're going to dig it up again. And they ask, "Well, why are they digging it up so many times?" You can see, we got water main, we have sanitary sewer, we have storm sewer. Those have to be done at separate times. So that's why they're continuing to dig up these streets. So this is a video that we put together. Maybe it's going to explain it a little bit better than I can. Yeah, I know. We're getting better. I like these ads, yeah. VRBO.
We drive on roads and walk on sidewalks every day, but you really know what's under your street. Let's take a journey below the surface. Clean water leads to the water treatment and is pumped through the water main to hydrants and into properties. Shut-off valves allow the city to turn off water to individual houses for repairs or to isolate leaks. Once water is used in the house, it travels through the sanitary sewer system to the wastewater treatment plant, where it is cleaned and returned to the environment. Manholes and sanitary service cleanouts are used to access the system for cleaning and inspection. The storm sewer drains rainwater from the street surface, collects it in catch basins, and pipes it to manholes where it is carried to a lake or river. In some areas, houses have some pumps in their lowest level where water is pumped out to the storm sewer system. Roads are made up of three layers. Some streets contain a curb and gutter carrying rainwater to catch basins and acting as a barrier between vehicles and pedestrians. Curb and gutter, boulevards, and sidewalks all fall within the public right-of-way, so they can be accessed and repaired if needed. Private utilities are generally placed in the boulevard or under the sidewalk.
So as you can see, within our road networks, there's a lot of things going on, and with these are, both these projects are going to be full reconstruction projects where we're just... Twenty years. There we go. We don't have any more sound on this video, so... Yeah, there's obviously a lot of things going on, and both of these projects are full reconstructions, so the sewer, the water, and the storm sewer itself. So this is East or West Allen Street, showing the existing utilities. Those of you that live out there know it's obviously a road that's reached its useful life. It's fallen apart. Four-inch water main, sanitary sewer, that's vetrified clay pipe where there's infiltration into that pipe, and it's, you know, having some cracks and things like that. So we had televised all of the sewer in town, and it showed that this, again, was past its useful life. And obviously, storm sewer within this area is very minimal. What we're going to be doing is adding that to it, so... Here's our Grove and East Street. This is flipped on its side, so north is to our right. So again, Grove Street and East Street, again, those roads are relatively narrow through there, and again, I mentioned sewer and water within those areas are in poor condition. Both of these areas do have very mismatched sidewalk systems within it, some here, some there, but what we're going to do is implement a through sidewalk system on all stretches. So this may be a little bit of a challenge to see. Can you zoom in just a little bit, Clinton? I know you're writing. Yeah, I got good stuff I'm saying, so you're going to want to write it down. Yeah, so this is a typical section of Grove and East Street. So we're going to, we're talking about a 24-foot wide road with a little bit of smaller curb and gutter on this, and we're going to be placing a five-foot sidewalk on one side of the street and topsoil and seeding within the boulevard areas, and then replacing driveways as needed, concrete aprons at least, and then in-kind behind that. One thing I do want to point out on this, you can see underneath the curb on each side is an edge drain. So within our street networks, we're seeing a lot of them are kind of falling apart. A lot of that's due to moisture that's underneath the ground that, you know, we have free stow cycles, so what we want to do is create that drainage layer and get it into those edge drains, getting into the storm sewer and getting it out of our pavements. But what this also allows is if people that have sump pumps in your properties, maybe you're discharging those pipes over land. Right now, we're going to have a tee at each one of the properties, so if you so choose and want to have that hard connection of a sump pump to that edge drain, this provides those opportunities to that. So we will put in a tee to each property and work with you on letting you know where that is, where you want it, and communicate. If you have it out there, we can make that connection, but again, at this point, we're just planning on putting that in and creating that tee and connecting it if it exists, or you can connect it in the future or hire a contractor and things like that. So provides a good opportunity, especially with our clay soils that we have here, to get that groundwater connected to the storm sewer. Those edge drains and those connections are for sump pumps only and/or foundation drains. It is not intended for roof downspouts or anything else like that that would inundate the underdrain, and it's really not intended for that, so... Here's an illustration. You just want to zoom into a portion of it, yeah, of Allen Street. So we're talking about a 30-foot or 34-foot road face-to-face, showing the driveway connections, essentially putting driveways back to where they were, and then sidewalk is the city's policy within these reconstructions of putting it on one side of the road. At this point, in feasibility, we're looking at the north side of the road. That may change as we get into final design, but that's what we're looking at right now as far as the path of the least amount of resistance. So we will communicate more on that through the open houses and as we get into design, if indeed that changes, but right now, that's the targeted location for that. And here's Grove Street and East Street, so we're talking about a 24-foot wide roadway, and that is smaller than a, than a city standard section, but what we understand is here is it's 100% local traffic. There's no through traffic going on these roadways, so saving dollars and things like that and trying to build the road that works for the best for these areas, working with city staff. That's what we're proposing here at this point. And then again, we're showing the approximate location of a sidewalk network on the, on the west and then the south side of Grove Street. And so here's, we're talking about the utilities underneath there. So we're going to be installing a new PVC eight-inch water main, so there'll be a new one-inch water service to each of the properties that are served out there, out to the right-of-way with a new curb stop, new hydrants appropriately spaced within the project limits out there, and then sanitary sewer will be an eight-inch PVC sanitary sewer with new services out to the right-of-way, connecting to the existing service that services each one of the properties. And then in the orange is the new storm sewer system. Obviously, anybody that lives out there understands the water flows from east to west through a majority of this, and just like Forest Street, it was just a river during these larger rain events coming east to west. So what we're doing is bringing up some storm sewer, installing catch basins along the way to help pick up that. And then we're connecting to a storm sewer system down in West Street that we installed two years ago in conjunction with that project, planning for this project and have those appropriate stubs. So you can see everything within that West Street intersection is in black. It's because we did that in 2020 for that project, so getting ready for this one, so we're essentially able to just connect and go. Same thing on East and Grove Street here. New water main, sanitary sewer, all eight-inch city standards, little bit of catch basins within this area. We're still, you know, once we get into final design, understand what we can do to improve drainage within this area and things like that. So with this, we've kind of put together a preliminary assessment role. We've went through, identified all of the properties, identified who has a sewer and who has a water service throughout here. We've reviewed, like in the Craig Street intersection, those four properties there, whether they received a service on the Craig Street project or if they have services on the Allen Street project, make sure that we're only assessing on one side of the, of the road. So we've went through those assessment roles to make sure that we're appropriate on that. So identifying all the properties and then we're generating these preliminary assessment roles for both of these sections. Same thing on East and Grove. Yep. So here we are, kind of talking about the project schedule. So we're here tonight, September 27th, and I did, I didn't mention that we are following the Minnesota statute, Chapter 429, process for the cities to levy assessments for these type of improvements, and we're following the city's assessment policy, and we'll get to that on the next slide. But when we're talking about the schedule, we're planning on holding an open house. We're going to invite you guys in here where we can talk a little bit more intimately about your property, what may be happening in front of your house. We'll bring in some boards here. I'll have a couple more of my staff members. Clinton's here. I'll bring lemonade, right? Cookies? Yeah, that good stuff. Yeah. Yeah, Andy will be here. It's, that'll give an opportunity for you to ask questions directly to me and not in front of a big group, and so find it very, we've done it in the last three, four projects, right, Clinton? And it's working out very, very well. Help you, you know, ask questions, us answer them. So we'll go through that open house. We're going to be designing the project here this winter, hoping for a bid opening in February, towards the end of February, and after we do that, so we've designed it, we've bid the project, then we're going to understand what the project is going to cost. Then we'll be able to rerun the assessment role based on actual costs. Everything that we have here tonight is preliminary. It's just based on engineers' estimates of where we think the project is going to come in. So we're going to hold that assessment hearing. Again, it'll be a similar meeting to this. I won't talk as much, and then we'll just be talking about the costs and, and the construction schedule as we get a little bit closer, so... And with that, the council chooses to continue to move forward. We'll award the project to a contractor beginning construction April, May-ish, with construction completion in and around the fall of '22, final completion of the final wear course, and any ex or seeding would be the following year. So, yeah, putting the estimated project cost together is, works out to about just shy of $2.7 million for both of these projects, and that looks like big numbers, right? I mean, that's, we'll just write checks for that. Obviously, it's a big deal, and the city is intending on taking out a bond, selling a bond for this project and assessing a portion of that. This number is something that the city has been planning for in their financial plannings of this capital improvement plan. So that may look like a big number, but, you know, these projects, we've got to get them crossed off the list and get them taken care of. So with that, we'll move to the next slide, the preliminary assessment role. Do you want to, should we hand these out? Or have people be able to pick them up?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, so we have the preliminary assessment roles that you guys can take with, but essentially, we put them together based on 30% of the street to the benefiting property on an adjusted front-footage basis, 30% of the sewer, and 30% of the water main on a per parcel basis. And then the remaining street is paid by the general fund, and the remaining 70% of the sewer and water is paid by each one of those utilities. And the storm water, or the storm sewer is 100% within the storm water utility. So we calculate all of that, basically dividing, you know, out 30% to the particular properties, and then the rest is borne by the city. There's this corner lot policy that we're following when we're calculating those, so... And we have copies of the preliminary role that you can take with you here tonight. And then with that, I think that's, do we have anything? Yeah, go ahead.
I always say something. When you do receive the assessments tonight, just please keep in mind, like Jason had mentioned with his schedule, this is a preliminary assessment role. The final assessment will be determined at the end of March when we open up our final bids, and in that meantime, the council may decide to change part of the project or eliminate part of it or whatever. That's entirely up to you, and I'm telling the council that, too. I don't mean to be pointing in front of you, sorry. But you do have through March to look at that, and then we will have the final assessment hearing in March. So if any of you have any questions about the assessments and how they're calculated, you know, please let me know. Come on in here, make an appointment or something. I can go through it with you all, okay? Easy enough?
Yep. And, yeah, they are preliminary, you know, not, I make very few mistakes, right? Very little, but we do, and... Yeah, okay. But if there is anything that, you know, you're confused about, we could talk about it during the open house. We can talk to Clinton directly, and we'll get it straightened out and hopefully answer all your questions, so...
Clinton, you want to talk about the deferment program, too?
I can.
If you mention that, so people understand how that works.
Um, there is a state statute out there that does allow property owners of either a certain age or disability that they can defer their assessment, which means the assessment will be approved, but it's deferred, which means you don't pay it until the property changes names, either through sale or the other way, if you're not around. But throughout the projects that we've had for the last several years, you know, there have been a large number of property owners that, that ask to defer their assessments, and the city council is always very good at working with that. Is that good?
Yeah. That is an option for...
It is an option, yep.
Certain demographic.
So with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor. You can address questions to the city council, and they can direct them to me if they're so choose.
If there's any questions, raise your hand. We'll get you come up to the podium and...
I would, can I just suggest for the sake of time?
Make it easier, just let them...
Cam, Sardines, if you wanted to stand up where you're at and state your name and address really loud, so I can write it down? Is that okay with you?
That's fine.
And many questions can get answered in the open house.
The open house is a great opportunity to ask your questions if you don't feel comfortable of asking anything specifically here tonight, so...
Yes?
Gerald Trump, who works with Dean West Allen. I've got a number of questions, of course, but number one question I've got is, is the sidewalk really needed? Is the 20, 34-foot wide street really needed? And if you put a 34-foot wide street, why couldn't you put a three-foot lane on either side marked off for that people could walk on or bicycle?
Jason? You want that one?
City standard is 34-foot wide street, and those are what we're, what we've been doing, and city policy is sidewalk on one side, so I'm following along with the...
I can tell you, my street just got done last year, Forest Street, and it narrowed to 34 feet, and if you have two people parking across from each other, it's one lane between. I mean, you can get two if everybody's perfect and you don't bang mirrors, but...
You don't want to go any narrower.
I, I don't think narrower is a viable option for anything that's a throughput road, my opinion on that, but especially after living on a road that got narrowed.
My name is Jeff Seron. I live at 101 West Allen. I'm curious what accessibility, or, you know, we can be able to get to our houses all the time?
Through construction?
I could probably answer that.
Yeah, go ahead.
After going through this last year, it's a challenge sometimes. It's Murphy's Law always comes into effect as soon as they open a road up, it's going to rain, and but it happens.
Do they, are they required to make it so we can get to our houses?
No. Not, not every time. They'll do their best, from what I've noticed. Hopefully, you've got good neighbors that'll let you cut through the yard to block over like I had and be able to park. Wish we had an alley. I mean, that's, when my street went through, an alley would have been great.
So that house emergency vehicle is supposed to be there? We can't get to our houses, then emergency vehicle is going to be able to get in?
There's plans in place with that to get there. It's not ideal. It's not ideal. Jason again.
Yeah, I mean, we need to dig in sewer. We got to dig in water, and, you know, they're eight to 14 feet deep, and the contractor does the best that they can to try and, you know, we do the best to, you know, allow as much as we can, but there is times when, you know, we're going to be digging and then it's going to rain three inches, and there's no way that we're going to be able to get a vehicle down there. But if there is, you know, an emergency, you know, the fire department's aware of what's going on and the contractor's aware, and we work together, you know, if those things do happen, so...
Well, and it was done pretty incrementally before, too, so it wasn't like the whole street was tore up at once. It was like, and this is just from my experience, it was kind of like half of it and then the next half. They did try to do that as well, which made it a lot more feasible.
Contractor had a lot of time, worked very well with us to get things through and...
It won't be dug up from Main to West Street. I mean, we'll be segmenting it, you know, I'd like to say that you should have access all the time, but that's just not possible. There is going to be some inconveniences. We're hoping to, to work with you, so we're going to set up a new mailbox bank somewhere. The contractor will, and then garbages. There will be garbage each week. Contractor will help in moving those bins, so we'll put names on them, making sure that you get those back. So those are just some of the logistics that we'll get into on some of these next meetings and discussions, so...
Anyone else?
John Clemmons, 812 10th Street, northwest in Los Seca. Have a question about the assessment role. Will that be a not to exceed? So when the original bids come in, if they're higher, this won't go higher, correct?
That would be up to the council. That's typically what we do.
Typically, you would raise it if...
No, no, typically, it would be a not to exceed, but that would be a question for the council. For some reason, it comes in higher. The city bears the rest of that cost, but I, we try and do the best we can to estimate these. Let's hope they come in lower, but it's, it would be up to the council on that.
The last six or seven projects they've done that I know of, the estimated bid has always been higher than the bid, actually, actual bid that I, that I can remember, so that they do go down. Jason's not perfect in his estimation.
And I've not, you know, I've law, you know, I've had, I've been a little bitter on a project, not in this community, but in another community, and that community did cap those, but again, it would be up to the council here and what they would want to do, so...
Mr. Mayor, can I have two more questions?
Yes.
Thank you. A second question, kind of like his, but I'm not so concerned about getting down the road, but at the end of the work shift, will they have access to the driveway, you know, gravel at the end of the driveway? So there's not a six-inch pump to get into a driveway? Can I put in the bid specs, right?
I mean, when the road becomes somewhat passable, they will have driveway access. If, when they're subcutting the road and they're building it, you know, and they're digging that down, there'll be times where, you know, that step will be there and we won't be temporary in that, but because they're building the road itself. But if they went through and done all the utilities, they'll kind of mound that in to be able to get access to them the best we can. Yep.
My third question relating to sidewalks, even though it's city policy, according to Jason, if enough residents don't want a sidewalk on their side of the street, can they vote not to have it or petition not to include it?
Well, we put that policy into effect quite a few years ago.
Yeah, and to answer your question, I have to be nice to you, because you're my first boss many years ago. Yes, to answer that, there have been times in the past where residents will come forward and they'll ask for either a sidewalk to be on the other side of the street, or, you know, they can talk with the city council at that time about what you would like to do with the sidewalk. It is our policy to have a sidewalk on at least one side of the street. It's in our city ordinance book, so we will push for that as, as best we can, but yes, residents can certainly come in and talk. We've had that quite a few times over the years, maybe during the open house or even during the other public hearings that we have in March or other meetings that we have, so...
Because there is a burden to a resident to have to shovel it and maintain it... Because there is a burden to a resident to have to shovel it and maintain it, unless you put a right next to it.
I didn't have a shovel, or a sidewalk until two years ago. I know what you mean.
Thank you.
Yeah?
That was, our project, they actually, everybody wanted both sides done. It was, I've never seen that before, but the residents, all but like two, requested both sides.
And it's always important to consider kids walking on that sidewalk, too, safely for school, so to do without a sidewalk would be something to think about in hindsight, out safety routes, as well.
And I, Jerry?
Jerry, I'd like to query all our folks here from West Allen, how many even think that, or what water sidewalk, within 20 feet of the front door, front门-
Yeah, I don't- Yeah, so we're not, we're not doing that at this point.
I don't, hey, I don't think anybody even wants that.
Any other questions?
Tracy Loebert, 419 West Allen, I'm, 419 West Allen.
Thank you, sorry.
I'm sorry, I don't, I'm really novice at this, so I'm really curious how the assessments work. When you, are you just completely just dividing up the cost, or do you take into effect how much of our lot that you're taking? And like he mentioned, the burden on citizens who maintain sidewalks, and changes in snow removal, and that kind of stuff, if that's considered, like, with the assessment, or if it's just dividing up the cost?
Jason, you want to run through this, or you want me to the percentages again?
Yeah, so we can look at this, and so you look at the top, it's, we're assessing 30% of the street to the benefiting property on a front-footage basis. So if you have, you know, a 100-foot lot, you're gonna be paying based on a 100-foot lot, you have a 75-foot lot, you're paying 30% of the street, including sidewalk, curb and gutter, the rock, the bituminous, and the driveways, on an adjusted front-footage basis. When it comes to the sanitary sewer and the water main, you get a service, you pay the same as the other person that got a service, and things like that, so. As far as snow removals and anything like that, I don't think that really comes into account here with any of it. Storm sewer, again, 100% based on those utilities, and then that other 70%, which is a large chunk of this project, is paid for by the rest of the taxpayers and those particular utilities themselves.
Okay, and to answer a little bit here, too, to, each individual assessment is based on how wide your lot is, okay? So, for example, the assessment that I had in 2020 is different than the guy east of me, because my lot's a little wider than his. So what we do is, we take the cost of the project, and divide that by how many feet are along the whole project, and divide it, or multiply the factor of how much per foot, okay? So then, let's say your lot is 60-foot wide, you pay 30% of whatever that cost is, and then what we do is, the assessment roll, we always, we always put over like a 20-year period on property taxes. So I can't speak, because I can't exactly remember, but I'll just say, like, my assessment was 7,200 bucks a couple of years ago, I didn't have to fork over 7,200 bucks that year, I just have to do it over 20 years, if that makes sense. And you can have the option, if you want to pay a chunk of that at the beginning, you can certainly do that before we put the rest of the balance on the properties, yeah, if that kind of answers your question a little bit, too. I got one behind you, John, and then you'll be next.
Mary Morrow, 812 10th Street, representing 301 East Grove, James Oak. Temporary water, is this gonna be the blue hose, ready to brought everybody on, and then how are we going to assess them for the water that they use, based on previous year, based on-
The temporary water will be the blue line in front of the, in front of your property there.
The contractor leaves the other one underground, it's up to the contractor to figure out-
It's up to the contractor to figure out how they want to provide temporary water to that, that could be through the existing line.
They not disconnecting some water?
They will after they get the new one put in, it's entirely up to them on how they want to do it. Typically, there's the blue pipe on top of the ground.
How will you charge the land for temporary water, and what they use or don't use, are you gonna base that on?
The last project, I think it was just absorbed by the utilities, because there's no way of metering it.
Property owner while they're not on a regular, hook up them? Is that what you're saying, you will not charge them?
I would honestly have to go back and look at my utility bill from in 2000, because I can't remember if I paid a water bill that summer. I honestly don't remember. Jason, do you have an answer? Can you answer that?
When they did the Fourth Street, they did hook into your main line that we came in the house, outside, so it actually went through your water meter-
Okay.
So everything was charged through your water.
Water meter.
Yeah. But other streets have then hooked up through your outside water spigot, and that wouldn't go through your water.
Which was my case.
What, you want to take that in, at least, like, from previous year, if it's not, right?
West First Street, when I lived there, that was through the spigot, so I didn't pay that summer, okay, so I-
You would have probably bet it was used.
John?
John Wardke, 715 Northeast Street. I'm at the dead end of that street, I have 140, are you gonna charge? You go free.
You heard that, huh?
You have 33, 33 feet, because that's-
The width of the, your half of the right-of-way. We gave you 33 feet.
That's how you gonna base it, then?
That's what I base it on, yep.
30 feet?
33 feet, half of the right-of-way.
Okay, and my neighbor's the same.
Which is your neighbor?
Right here, Rhonda Friesen, 716 Northeast Street. I have the same question as him.
We're just gonna charge John yours as well.
Everybody wants a big lot till this time comes.
What was your address again?
716 Northeast Street.
Yep, 33 feet also.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry?
Jerry, 302 East Grove Street. How wide is East Grove Street right now?
About 20 feet.
So it'd be four feet wider. Okay, my second question is, when you add the sidewalk there, you're gonna add another six foot?
It's a five-foot wide sidewalk, and that'll, and that'll be within the boulevard area, so behind the curb.
But I mean, you're gonna go in the width at 24 feet, and then you're gonna put the six foot more of person promptly in the sidewalk, right?
A five-foot sidewalk width, yep. Yeah, what's-
There's no way to go. So we live on the East Grove Street right now, we can figure it's gonna go four foot wider, nine foot wider, really, than what it is right now. Right?
Well, the, again, the road would get about two feet wider on each side, and then there would be a five-foot sidewalk within the grass, so.
Through the grass, yeah.
Yeah, through the grass.
And then my next question, one more, quickly.
Yep.
What about all the trees, then, when you widen up the-
Each-
Who takes care of that?
It would be part of the contract, the ones that need to be taken out would be part of the contract, yep. We're gonna try and maintain trees as much as we can, we'll work with city staff to identify any diseased trees, you know, things that may have to come out, and then the ones that are impacted by the improvements themselves. But we, you know, we do everything we can to try and keep the integrity as much as we can of the neighborhood with trees there. But I can never guarantee it, until we get into design, and then ultimately construct it.
Do we have any more questions? All right. Before you do leave tonight, though, if you would like to grab a copy, I made 35 copies of the assessment roll, if you want to grab one of those, you're certainly more than welcome to, or if not, you know, swing in here the next couple of days, I can get you one. But yeah, there's certainly here for you to, to review.
And they're separate, so there's the one, you don't need to grab both of them, just the one for the Allen, and then one for East Grove, so. This is the East Grove, and this is the Allen Street.
Yep.
Maybe I'll just take it out and put it on the- Put it on this, on the table out there, so that they can start to just file out. That's fine, sure.
And I just would like to, just if I could encourage everyone real quickly here, let me find the slide. Well, November, please keep looking in your mailbox for the notice that we will have the open house, more than likely in this building, in November, we can, I know Jason and I, we've been working with these open houses for like the last 10 or 12 years for street projects, like you mentioned, and they, they work out very, very well. We're actually able to sit down and talk to you one-on-one for a few minutes to look at your property, and, or the diagram, anyway, and we can do our best answering some questions, we'll be doing that next month, all right? Is there any, any council discussion on this? And if you can't make the open house call, anyway, we'll, we'll still work with you. You know, you may not be able to if you're out of town, or at work, or whatever, but please, by all means, come in and ask your questions, because we have found over the years that asking questions during the open house is a lot, it's just a lot more comfortable for everybody, and it, it works out pretty well, and we're able to, to get through a lot of things during that, during that time. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 202124.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And- At this time, we'll close the public hearing? At? 7:43. You want to, should we take it, just a 30-second break?
Yeah, thank goodness. Let him clear out.
In case, sure. I'm gonna actually give, that's a new recorder. County news. Do you want?
Do we want to, you said them or not? Do you, do you want to say hi, or do you want to just sit there and listen?
You're smart, you're smarter than your dad. He's like, yep. All right, that went very well.
Yes.
All right.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda? All right, attached are the minutes from our last meeting, and the accounts receivable, as well as the payables. I just want to point out, today I did add one more bill into the payables, we, we paid about $1,100 fuel bill for the golf course. That came in today, so I, I cut the check before I printed everything.
Bye, Jason.
Thank you, Tom Ray, we'll talk to you later.
Thanks.
Um, that's all I have, if anybody has any questions on the payables.
I think a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public forum. Is there anybody here to speak from public forum? Public forum, public forum, thank you. Notice and communications. Uh, the only notice and communications I have, a few of you did receive a magazine in the mail last week, and then I, you all have a calendar, the utilities put a calendar together this year, and they just came within the last couple of weeks, so that's your, that's your first 2022 calendar. Notice and communicate, or no, we're past the council reports, I know Melissa's got a great big one all prepared. Oh, boy, just a minute, I gotta get my clicky.
And I loved it at home.
Did you really?
The thing, yes, but we, okay, you just let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, so we went through and our grant program, revolving loans.
Grant program, yeah.
Grant, my god. And of the 16 applicants, we were able to approve 13 of them, some of them at the full request, and some of them at half the amount requested. Our new structure that we came up for this year included interior structure repair or improvements, so it was really nice to be able to give that opportunity to some of the businesses. We also discussed the daycare or childcare, right now, it's still ongoing. So once we get more of a narrative or an objective of what we want to do, then we're gonna go through and be able to present that formally to council, what the objective is, and how we plan to attack it. Right now, we're just trying to figure out, you know, what is the objective, and is it actually obtainable? A lot of things we don't like about childcare is some of the restrictions that are placed by the state, well, we can't combat state laws, you know, so we have to think about things like that. Another thing was a community center update, we don't have one yet, we haven't actually had a meeting yet, so there isn't an update on that, I think.
We're gonna throw some hints out there that we are looking for some volunteers to be on the board like that.
Yep.
I don't know if there's any way to get that out to the public.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, you just wait till my administrative reports, there's some other committees that are falling short these days.
Yes, 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 so we focus, we, we focus mainly on the loan, and we're really excited about that this year. Yeah, I think that was about, those were the main points.
Good job, Melissa. Jimmy, you've been anywhere?
No, we, Park Road is, is full of residents, they're doing well financially, they're moving forward on their, on their elevator project, everything is positive, it's moving up, so.
Mike?
Oh, you did the nursing home. Um, well, Clinton put out an email about getting together for the golf-
Yep.
Advisory board, and waiting for some feedback.
I'm pushing for October 13th, if you're cool with that.
Works for me.
I think I'm just gonna send an email out saying, we are meeting that day, so.
So October 13th, tend to believe, is when our, we'll be meeting next, to go over everything, most of the numbers should be pretty well in by that time.
Perfect. Administrative reports. My turn. Yes. Okay, you have your cash balance report as of last Friday. Question to ask, our next city council meeting is Monday, October 11th, we generally do not meet on that day since it is a holiday, so I'm asking if the council would like to meet on Tuesday, October 12th instead, that is traditionally what we've done over the years. We are not required by law not to meet on that particular holiday, but we've just been doing it over the years, so that we do not conduct business that evening. It's completely up to you, that is completely up to the city council.
I will say the same thing I've said the last three years now, that I think this holiday is crap, so I choose to not observe it, so I say we just do it on that Monday.
I have no problem meeting on that Monday. I, it doesn't make zero difference.
I've got no objections on whether you-
I'm motion to do it on Monday, October 11th.
Second?
Yeah, I'll say it.
Well, we don't need to just-
Yeah, I just think it's-
All right, Monday it is. Okay.
I won't forget that it's on a Monday.
Sure.
Change in dates on us here.
Can I come up, go in dressed like an Indian? Well, now-
Mike, the clothes on, Jim.
Mikey, that does not make the paper.
Freedom of the press, Jim.
Thanks, Mike.
Having, this is perfect segue. I kept it, I have an article in the administrative report that really encourages local city councils across the country not to get involved in party politics at council meetings. It was very well written. It's written by a former city administrator in Minnesota, actually, but if you just take the time to read it, it talks about how, you know, state legislatures and things like that, there are partisan politics all over the place, but we really don't have that at city council level in America. So it was just, it was a good article, I thought. I am going to say though that there are some big towns, bigger cities that you may be like a Democrat or Republican on the city council, but the council as a whole doesn't debate and talk about the two political parties so much. Minneapolis, for example, is party politics, but they don't piss fight over Democrat and Republican ideals necessarily. That's a terrible example of Minneapolis, but anyway. Coming up here, Andy just mentioned October 13th, we'll shoot for that golf advisory board. The park board, we have, I know two individuals have filled out an application to be a member of the park board. We need a couple more, so if any of you have any ideas, please let me know. And then I'm going to roll right into the planning commission. We, last month, we announced a vacancy on our planning commission. We've opened that up and we have got zero applicants for that. So if any of you can come up with any ideas or names for anybody to serve on these boards, please let us know.
Did we put these on social media?
Yes.
Perfect. Just so we can all share it and put it out there.
And maybe I'll even throw it out again this week.
Okay. How big will the park board be?
The park board I'm looking will be five people. One would be a council member, which I think will suggest to be Jim because you had suggested that earlier, but we do need four other residents.
I don't have a problem.
And we've had a couple of volunteers so far, is that?
Two, yeah.
Excellent. We'll do what we can do with what we have.
How long do we want to give it before we ask people and put them on the spot so then they agree with it?
I, my goal is to get a park board in place next month, or this month, next month in October. I'd like the park board to meet a few times over the winter months so we can actually plan the park in Northwood, so we can talk about a few things that, you know, that we kind of have in the hopper right now. So I would like to get these going pretty soon.
Well, let Mikey get a chance to get it out of the paper. We don't hear anybody, maybe we can put some people on the spot.
We have two newspapers here, so.
Yeah, KMS, right?
Thank you.
Perfect. Any questions other than that with the administrative report? I don't know if we're going to have a special session in the legislature. They had talked about doing that to figure out how to spend some of this extra money that the state has right now due to COVID and American Rescue Plan and all that. They were supposed to meet on September 6th and that was three weeks ago. And talking about party politics, it's still ugly up there, so I don't even know if the legislature is going to have a special session anytime soon to talk about how to spend some of this relief money. I pretty much guarantee you, we ain't going to get it, but that's my two cents.
Could be two cents more than what we get.
Exactly.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
I make a motion to approve the administrative report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Old business. Preliminary general fund budget.
Yes, okay, so over the past several months, as you know, we've looked at the different department budgets in our general fund. Tonight, we are required, since this is our last meeting in September, we are required to adopt our preliminary levy in which I have to give to the city, to the county auditor here in the next few days. So attached in your packet is, are all the budget sheets put together? I also put a little memo together to explain what our levy resolution really means. So when you look at our tax levy resolution, there's five parts to it and I explained what those are in this memo. A few points I do want to make really before anything, before we get into anything. Let me find it here. Okay, the three items I want to talk to you about are on the screen. The 2022 preliminary tax levy, we took...
Look, Quentin, we turned that.
Oh, you want me to move a little bit?
Can anybody still see that?
The portion of our tax levy that pays our debt payments, like these three projects that we were just talking about earlier tonight, the portion of that resolution dropped way down because some of our debt has been paid off, so we won't have, we won't have that debt to pay next year, which is awesome. So that helps a little bit with our final tax levy. Another item is that I did not put any money in our tax levy to transfer to the golf course like we have done for the last several years. We had been levying like 20,000, I think 30,000 one...